I'm calling this meeting of the council of the town of Silver City to order. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is proclamations, and we have two of them. We'd like to welcome all of those involved here tonight. We have all of the Silver High Fighting Coach Wrestling Team along with their coach, Luis Alvarado, and his assistants, Juan Carlos Manas and Jacob Vega. Our first proclamation is since April is Continental Divide Trail Days, the town would like to honor and recognize this with a proclamation. Would Raul Torrieta please come forward to receive it? Now, while Raul is coming up, I'm just going to bring this proclamation down with me. And so, secondly, we'll do the Silver High Fighting Coach Wrestling Team proclamation.
Ken, I want you to meet Jamie.
How are you? Yeah, I'm at the committee meeting. Come around. Whereas, in 2014, the town of Silver City Council issued a proclamation recognizing the honor of Silver City's designation as the first gateway community of the Continental Divide Trail. So, we owe a lot of thanks to our city council for issuing that initial proclamation. Whereas, the town of Silver City in Grant County continues to provide exceptional outdoor recreational opportunities, including walking, bicycling, hiking, and horseback riding, which appeal to an expanded number of residents and visitors from far and wide. And whereas, engaging in regular outdoor exercise is known to improve health and well-being. Our trails are beautiful, valuable, and freely accessible. They represent an integral part of daily life for education, fun, and fitness. Whereas, world-class trails, including the Continental Divide Trail, enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the area, and offer an attractive recreational resource for young and old. And whereas, many educational activities, including workshops and seminars and trail work, as well as amusement and industry events, are scheduled for April 28th through April 30th, 2017, to celebrate and promote the trails and greenways of Silver City. And whereas, the Continental Divide Trail Trail Days events are a chance to increase public awareness of the town's extraordinary trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreational activities, proclaim the importance of our local and national network of trails and greenways, and celebrate the kickoff of the 2017 Continental Divide Trail through hike season. And whereas, we encourage residents to participate in the scheduled CDT Trail Days activities. Now, therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Continental Divide Trail Days, and urge all citizens to make full utilization of local trails a priority activity for themselves and their families, demonstrating to all others their commitment to preserving the wonderful natural scenic and recreational qualities of Silver City, trails, and open spaces. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and I'm honored to order this. Do you have any of our ones to get pictures? Or would you like to say something?
I would love for her to say a few words, because we've actually, we've both been organizing this together.
Hello. Thank you all for coming. My name is Jenny, and last summer I hiked from Mexico to Canada. My journey started here in Silver City, and when I arrived last spring for the Trail Days Festival. In a way, it ended here too, because now I live in town and work for the Continental Divide Trail Coalition. The Continental Divide Trail runs for 3,100 miles along the spine of the United States, passing through New Mexico, Colorado, Wyoming, Idaho, and Montana. When I decided to hike it from beginning to end, I had never done anything like that before. I had been backpacking for two, three, maybe four days at a time, but not for five months straight. I didn't know when I arrived in Silver City if I could do it. I just knew I was going to try. Along the way, I encountered blistering heat, hypothermia, treacherous snow and ice, and terrifying wild animals. I passed through the high desert, through canyons, over mountains, and deep into the heart of small-town America. Yes, I counted social and cultural experiences as part of my hike. They were among the most memorable. And then, last fall, on a wet and miserable day, I arrived at the Canadian border in Glacier National Park. Its jagged peaks, high alpine passes, and lush waterfalls are a world away from Silver City, New Mexico. Somehow, I had done it, this thing that everyone in my life had told me gently that they didn't think I could do. Every year, hundreds of people come from around the world with that same vision, that same goal, and that same uncertainty. Along the way, people in towns like Silver City assist them in their journey. Silver City was named the CDT's first gateway community in 2014. I remember it as one of the most vibrant and welcoming towns along the trail. Unlike other towns where people don't even know what hikers are doing there, members of your community work actively to promote and improve the CDT. It's clear that people here value the trail, the economic benefits of its increasing tourist market, and the chance to support people who are attempting to do something incredible. This month of April, we celebrate the third annual Trail Days Festival, the joyous and educational kickoff of the hiking season. Hikers and outdoor enthusiasts will gather from across the country. We'll have everything from live music to activities for kids to two days of seminars about hiking the CDT. On Friday night at the Toad, there will be a raffle, and a lot of people will win some very cool hiking gear. Please be sure to join us on Sunday morning when our very own Raul Torrieta will lead a community hike up Gomez Peak. We look forward to a long and wonderful relationship between the Continental Divide Trail Coalition and the town of Silver City. Please feel free to talk to me about any ideas or comments that you have. Thank you again for coming.
Mayor. Mayor, I had a commissioners' meeting this morning, so excuse me, mayor and councils. Actually, when I got involved, you know, ground floor in 2014, this is going to be one of the major economic bases that's going to happen with the hiking and the activity here in Silver City, Grant County, or the southwest. We have the most beautiful trails here in Grant County, and I'm so glad that we can share it not only with the community here, but actually, the whole world, bottom line. Thank you very much, Mayor, and we'll see you there.
Thank you. Could I ask Coach Alvarado and his assistants and all of the Silver High Fighting Coach Wrestling Team to please come up? It's important to recognize that when honors like this are earned, that a lot of credit goes to parents, and you can see the support of the parents here tonight, because they work so hard to support their students in their various activities. Whereas, Councilor Ray, would you come down, please? Councilor Ray is the one who introduced this proclamation. Whereas, in 2014, the town of Silver City Council issued a proclamation recognizing the honor of Silver City's design... We expect y'all to take advantage of that Continental Divide Trail.
That's probably a good thing for you.
It's a good workout.
That sure is a good one. We'll take note of that one, right?
Okay. Whereas, the Silver High School Fighting Coach Wrestling Team won the 2017 Class A 4A state championship. And whereas, the wrestling team finished the 2017 state championship tournament with 222 points. Whereas, the Silver High School Wrestling Team is coached by Luis Alvarado with assistance from Juan Carlos Manas and Jacob Vega. And whereas, sophomore Zeke Marcus, 120-pound class, junior Raymond Rodriguez, 132-pound class, junior Vinnie Vega, 160-pound class, and senior Armando Galeno, 170-pound class, captured individual state championship titles. And whereas, senior Ricky Villalobos, 113-pound class, sophomore Ronnie Sandoval, 126-pound class, freshman Michael Gary III, 138-pound class, junior Jayden Wytholder, 152-pound class, were able to take second place. Whereas, freshman Vince Marin took third place in his respective weight class. Whereas, junior Damon Marcus took fourth place in his respective weight class, as well as sophomore Ian Veelines, sophomore Will Camber, and sophomore Isaac Sanchez, who made the Constellation semifinals. And whereas, the Silver High School Fighting Coach Wrestling Team are the best wrestling team in Class A 4A wrestling in 2017. Now, therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, and on behalf of the town council, extend congratulations and recognition to the Silver High School Fighting Coach Wrestling Team, and do hereby proclaim the week of March the 19th through March the 25th, 2017, as Silver High School Fighting Coach Wrestling Team Week, and urge all of the Silver City citizens to applaud and support our Class A 4A state wrestling champions for their outstanding athletic accomplishments and exemplary sportsmanship. Coach? Could you help me?
First of all, first of all, I knew this guy Hugh Coach Alvarado when he was in high school, and he was one hell of a wrestler. I appreciate you guys. He's my cousin. He doesn't know it, but he's my cousin. And I also have another cousin here, Mr. Aguirre. Puerito here. I don't know if you remember, but it's a long time ago, you killed a deer, and we were at your dad's place, and your dad wanted to clean it, and you were there by yourself. And I helped you. But look at you now, all grown up. Congratulations, you guys. Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you very much.
I sure will. Just at this time, I'd like to go ahead and thank the town council and our mayor for having us here tonight. I'd just like to say just a few words. Take a little bit of your time. These young men have represented themselves, their families, the school, and community with class on and off the mat the entire season. I've had the privilege to be coaching at Silver High and be on the faculty for the last 15 years. All of this success, like Dr. Ladner said, comes from, again, all the support from their parents, from my two assistant coaches, Mr. Minas and Jacob Vega, if you guys would come over here. And of course, from our school administration, we have one of these, Marcie Marcus is here today representing also her son, but as a part of our school administration. This state tournament, we had a record high of eight finalists. That was the first time that Silver High has ever put eight finalists in the state tournament. Unfortunately, we only won four of that, but again, that was also another record, because I've been there for 15 years, we've won two or three individual state titles, and I was able, you know, were able to bring home four individual state titles. So, once again, we thank you guys for recognizing, you know, us here tonight, and I'm going to go ahead and call up each one of these individuals. I'll start off with the 106. We have Vince Marin. At 113, Ricky Villalobos. At 120, Zeke Marcus. At 126, Ronnie Sandoval. At 132, Ramon Rodriguez. At 138, Michael Aguirre III. At 145, Damian Marcus. At 152, Jayden Weathalter. At 160, Vinnie Vega. At 170, Armando Galindo. At 182, Ian Veelines. At 195, Will Camber. And then, I also like to recognize one of our other wrestlers here tonight, that's Dan Hockes. He also wrestled 106, 113 for us, and he helped contribute a lot for us this season, so it's Dan Hockes. Once again, thank you guys for recognizing us here tonight, and hopefully, we only have two seniors, so hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll be doing this again next year.
Thanks, Silver High, for making us proud and representing the town. Mr. Torrieta? Mr. Torrieta? Did you wrestle in high school?
I wrestled in high school, sir.
Yeah. I just wondered if you were trying to get that proclamation before you left. No one signed up for public input, so the next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Pedersen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let folks know that last week, a little bit from about Saturday to midweek on Thursday, I was in Washington, D.C. with the Municipal League Executive Committee, attending the National League of Cities Congress Congressional Cities event. And the purpose of that event is really to meet with our congressional delegation, to ensure that they understand each state municipal league meets with their congressional delegation, to make sure that we explain what are the priorities. And the top priority of the National League of Cities' agenda was to retain community development block grant money. And while we were there, we talked with each one of our senators and with one of our representatives, and then with two staff members from the other representatives, and explained how important the community development block grant monies are to New Mexico, in particular, community development block grant monies have enabled Silver City to do so much, especially up on Tuaua Hill. There's 10% reserve for colonists because we're a border with Mexico State, and that just extends the money even further for us. It does things like provide us with 100% grant funding for sewer and water projects and paving and sidewalks and things that we couldn't really do without, especially in this day and age of no monies, no capital improvement monies available from our state this year. So, those are really critical funds, not just for our state, but across the United States, because in large municipalities of 50,000 or more, those are called entitlement communities or municipalities, and they automatically get community development block grant monies. And in many of those large municipalities, when you hear "mills on wheels," that's who's funding them. It's through the community development block grant, which is out of the Housing and Urban Development Department, or HUD, Department. We've also done a number of other things through that. We've gotten money for the energy, what are they called?
Energy efficiency audits?
Yeah, energy efficiency audits, being able to upgrade people's homes with the appropriate kinds of light bulbs and with different sorts of things like that, low-cost showerheads. So, there's a lot of things that that provides. And as we were having dinner that night before leaving Washington, we found out through Representative, I'm trying to think which one it was. Actually, I think it, well, it was one of the senators' representatives, chief of staffs, that had sent an email to all of us, letting us know that there'd been a leak on President Trump's budget that he was going to provide. And one of the things, along with a number of other items, was that he was going, he proposed a cut of $3 billion, $3 billion that fund community development block grants. In addition, he also, unbeknownst to us and unbeknownst to the National League of Cities, put on in his budget to delete the essential air service program through Department of Transportation, which provides the subsidy that runs the planes out of Silver City, Grant County Airport, out of Clovis, out of Taos, out of Alagordo, out of Carlsbad. So, I just want to reassure everyone that one of the things that was said over and over again by all of our congressional delegation that's there in, you know, from New Mexico, our three representatives and our two senators, that the president may proffer a budget, but they never present the budget. The Congress, they don't present the budget, they make the budget themselves. So, they're well aware that we need to keep CDBG monies, and they'll be well aware that we want the essential air service subsidies to continue as well, which are really needed in our rural community. So, I just wanted to let you know that our league and our town and everybody is making sure that our congressional delegation knows how critical these funds are to, really, to all of our municipalities, and especially to us here in Silver City. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Don.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing. I've been approached by several constituents, as well as a couple of employees of the town, about a situation that they're really concerned with. After we got a new president in November, apparently, there are some staff members who have made sure their fellow employees and other members of the public know that they're not allowed to speak Spanish anymore, and that's a problem for me. I know that it's not the city's policy or anything like that, but it is an issue, and I've been getting some complaints about it. So, I just want to say, and I'm going to say this in Spanish, because I do want to get this message out to the people who speak Spanish and are having this problem. Nuestro idioma es parte de nuestra cultura, y nuestra cultura es lo que hace a nuestra comunidad fuerte. Nadie tiene el derecho de decirles que no pueden hablar español, ya sean empleados de la ciudad o miembros del público. Si esto les parece en cualquier departamento de la ciudad, por favor, pónganse en contacto conmigo directamente. Mi número celular es 5902941. Gracias.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. We, as city officials, are elected or were appointed. I come from an old school, and I truly believe in being humane about things, respecting one another. One of the things that we try to do for our city is that we try to keep people working. Jobs, jobs are hard to come by. There are some companies that are, for lack of a better word, greedy. To me, and this is just my opinion as a councilor and as an individual, Walmart is starting to have a bunch of self-checking stations. I urge the people in Silver not to do it. And the reason I say this is because we're always fighting for jobs, we need jobs. Walmart is a big corporation, they can afford to pay their employees. If I get in trouble, well, so be it. But, don't use them. Let them hire people. Machines are going to start to take over men and the jobs, and then we're really going to be hurting. Another thing, also, I don't know if any of you councilors got a letter from a C.N. Flanders. I'll give it to the mayor, see if he can read it. But this year pertains to, this letter pertains to an ACLU meeting in which the attached handout was distributed. I'm going to make it short. I believe that we should make Silver City a sanctuary town. Why not? You'd be surprised how many people want to come to America, and yet, there's other people higher up than us that are totally against having other races of people here. Why? We all bleed red. It doesn't matter if you're brown or yellow or green, it doesn't matter. The Good Book says, "We are all equal." I believe in The Good Book, and we should be, we should do like that. I will give this to the mayor, see if he can read it and see what he thinks about it, but this is just my opinion. But this is just my opinion.
Councilor Lehman Smith?
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am back, and it is good to be back. I was gone for a few weeks being grandma in charge of a four-year-old and an almost two-year-old, and it just about killed me. And I am glad to be back at work. I want to thank constituents who've been contacting me over the last week or so, calling and emailing about the issue that Councilor Wright spoke about and about some others. Please be patient with me, I'm just reentering. I need to have some meetings and take care of some business, and then I promise I will get back to all the constituents. And it is good to be back, and I plan to continue to really work hard for the more prosperous, more equitable, more compassionate town we live in.
Thank you. Does the council have any more comments?
I do.
Okay, Councilor Wright?
Let's all try to be very patient because we have to have patience. And also tourism is a good word, it's a good thing to have, but you also have to give credit to the people from Silver for supporting all the businesses throughout Grand County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I also just wanted to mention, if you've read the Daily Press today, you read that there was an article about a motorcyclist who was in an accident and because he was aware, he is alive right now. So I would just like for drivers to remember that summer months are coming, people are on their motorcycles, just be a little bit more aware of your surroundings before you cut into traffic or make U-turns in the middle of highway or things like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have one comment, and that is the city relies a great deal on community members serving on our various committees. And we have a number of committee openings that need some help. For example, we need some committee members on the Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission, the museum board, two positions there, and the incentive review committee, there's four positions there, and the planning and zoning committee, one position there. Now you can find out more about what these positions entail and what these committees do if you just go to the town website. It's pretty easy to locate, so I won't take time to read all of that here. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does the council have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. The next item then is approval of the minutes of the February 28, 2017 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Lehman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City on February 28, 2017.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Vedderston?
I second the motion as stated.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item is reports. Item 8A will be a report by Gilbert Helton, the Grand County Emergency Manager, who will report on emergency management in our community. Mr. Helton? You need to push that little button there to...
Okay, can you hear me now? Nope, it's got to be ready. There you go. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. First of all, thank you for having me come by and give a quick report on the Grand County Office of Emergency Management. First of all, my name's Gilbert Helton, I'm the Grand County Emergency Manager, and I've been doing emergency management for 10-plus years in the local level. Not knowing exactly what, I mean, there is so much that I could talk about, I just narrowed it down to a few items that emergency managers do locally, in fact, throughout the state. And anyway, after I give a little spill, I'll take questions from anybody. But September 11, 2001 is a very memorable time. Since then, that time woke us up as a nation. And since then, many jurisdictions have been providing, or have received funding for training, exercise, and equipment through several programs, trickle-down from FEMA through Department of Homeland Security and to the locals. There are many grants that help, that we can tap into for funding for several things. So that's one of the things that emergency managers do here locally in New Mexico, that's grants management. That's one of the largest parts of our duties, our jobs. Another one is plans. Most jurisdictions, including Grand County, have a number of emergency management plans. They too have to be maintained. Some of the most common plans that I can think of off the top of my head are emergency operations plans. Grand County does have an all-hazard emergency operation plan, and it includes all the jurisdictions in Grand County. They need to be reviewed and updated annually, so that takes up a lot of time. A mitigation plan, the Grand County mitigation plan, which also includes all the jurisdictions in Grand County. Or let me rephrase that. The mitigation plan is being rewritten right now, which will include all the jurisdictions, that being Silver City, Baird Hurley, and Santa Clara, and Grand County. Because the old one, when it was written, it didn't include everybody. It was just a Grand County plan, so we've made it all-inclusive. Other plans that I can think of are incident action plans for scheduled events such as the Blues Fest, those types of events that are scheduled. Captain Villalobos has been a very, very helpful in incident action plans for those events for the Town of Silver City, and he and I have worked together for many years, and we continue to do so. He and his, there's Captain Portillo, Freddie Portillo, who's starting to learn the ropes of emergency management, and he's doing very well as a matter of fact. Other types of plans that take up a lot of emergency managers' time is emergency action plans for industry, businesses, schools, hospitals. Through collaboration, we help them, those companies, those agencies, to come up with their emergency action plans. Exercises, that's another major portion of our duties. It's now mandated that emergency managers keep a schedule of exercises for three years in the future. Exercises are a great way for us to meet our peers throughout the state, and we discover what emergency response capabilities our neighbors have. We work together in, oh gosh, I'm trying to think of the word. We're all, the state's cut up in six different sections. We're in the number six section, region. So that includes Grand County, Luna County, Capitán County, Doñana County, Hidalgo County, and I believe that's it. Anyway, we all work together and we exercise together so we learn each other's capabilities so that when something does happen, we can always count that they'll be there to help us and vice versa. Some of the types of exercises that we hold are table tops, full-scale exercises, seminars, workshops, functional exercises, drills and games. Some of the most recent ones is we've had a big tabletop with Freeport-Mack Moran. The Town of Silver City was well represented with their emergency manager, Captain Villalobos. We had lots of representation from throughout the county, and they held a big tabletop exercise. And so it was an active shooter exercise on their property. So it kind of helped us learn what everyone's going to do if it ever does happen. Hopefully it doesn't, but in today's world, you never know. Another one was we hold dam exercises, that being exercises to exercise the emergency action plans for the dams that we have here in Grand County. I don't mean it in a derogatory way. Department of Health exercises. Every year, for the last three years, I've been asked to participate in the Doñana Flu exercises. They have huge exercises where they actually, instead of, they exercise their plans to do some, to give flu vaccines to the entire community there in Doñana. But it's, you know, it's in case we ever have like an epidemic of some sort, and they exercise their plans, that's the way they do it, is they give away flu shots. So anybody can go drive through or walk through any of the areas that they're given those at that time and receive their flu shots. The Silver Consolidated School District has recently exercised for active shooter incidents. You hear active shooter a lot nowadays, unfortunately. That's the world we live in. You know, it's, that's all I'm going to say because I don't want to go into that, but it's just the way it is nowadays. Training's another major portion. Again, we train with the schools, with anybody that's willing to do some training, and the more training we do, the better off we're going to be when something does happen. Well, most recently, I helped teach the ICS 300, 400 up at Western New Mexico University. That was a FEMA course that was brought here free of charge to anybody that wanted to attend, and it went real well. We had lots of people from the Town of Silver City, from just everywhere within the county. It was very well taken. Emergencies and disasters take up a large amount of our time also, unfortunately. My office is always available to assist jurisdictions declaring emergency and/or disaster declarations when appropriate, and to request support from Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, or support from other agencies throughout the state and federal level. So if ever anything does happen, like it has in the past, we all know Quail Ridge Fire, we've heard of, we see the big fires on our forests every year. When those things do happen, and if you need assistance, please contact me, and, you know, I'll be the conduit between the state and the federal level. Response, that's another major portion. Again, one, the first thing that pops into my mind where we had a multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional response was the Quail Ridge Fire. That was a doozy, and unfortunately, you know, it's just the nature of the beast of living here in Silver City, even though it's so beautiful and a beautiful place to live. Grand County is very prone to wildfires and other types of fires. Recovery, one thing that a lot of people overlook is the recovery phase that takes some time from an emergency manager. You know, we have to recover from disasters and from even the scheduled events after the fair, we have to recover from it. After the Blues Fest, we have to recover from it. So my office is there to help jurisdictions with their recovery efforts after any type of incident. The National Incident Management System, NIMS, I want to mention that real quick because a lot of people have a misconception about NIMS, and I'm trying to help clear that up within, you know, as much as possible. It provides a consistent framework for all aspects of emergency management and incident response. This framework is supposed to be sustainable, flexible, and scalable to meet changing incident needs and allow for integration of other resources from various partners through multi-aid agreements, or mutual aid agreements, rather. NIMS has been always said, well, it's just an incident command system. We learned that at the academy, we learned that at wherever. Well, NIMS is a lot more than ICS. ICS is part of NIMS, and NIMS is the National Incident Management System. NIMS is woven into everything that we've covered so far. So it's that mesh that's going to hold everything together. Like in an omelet, the egg, it holds all your stuff that you put in an omelet together. That's NIMS, that's a good analogy of it. But the reason I bring it up is because NIMS must be adopted by every jurisdiction that receives federal preparedness funds. And so far, I haven't heard that we're going to start losing preparedness funds to a large extent. We never know, though, but at this point in time, if you are receiving federal preparedness funds, you must adopt NIMS. And FEMA mandates that. And in the past, if one jurisdiction within a county had adopted it, they were, everyone else is able to ride on their coattails, per se. I think that's going to be changing in the very near future where everyone that's ever could even try to or apply for federal funds will probably need to adopt NIMS. Grand County has done so since, I believe, 2006 or sooner. I don't know exactly, I can't remember when exactly, but if your jurisdiction ever needs help with the adoption of NIMS and what it requires, they can contact me, and I'd be more than happy to go over that process because in today's economy, in today's world, we need to scrounge money from every nook and cranny and look under every rock, and that's some of the funding that we can possibly someday hang our hat on when we need it. And in closing, I'd just like to say that if you have any, if you need any, if you have any questions that, you know, I'm not able to answer tonight, or if you need further information from my office, please contact me at 575-574-0065. Or you can email me at G-Helton, that's G-H-E-L-T-O-N, at grandcountynn.com. My office is right across the hallway from here, from this room. You can come visit me in person. Or you can always contact Captain Villalobos or Captain Freddie Portillo from the Silver City Police Department, and they also would be able to help you out, and, you know, if they can't, I'd be more than happy to help you out. And that's all I have. If there are any questions of me, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Helton. It was very thorough, and I enjoy it, and we need to know something I tell for the people of Silver City and Grand County. Again, thank you for coming and doing this report.
You bet. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Helton.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys have a good evening.
Alex, did anything come up since we talked last?
I just wanted to address a little bit of what Councilor Donal brought up about the comments that are being made by city employees. I need to be told about them by the employees so that I can address them. If I don't hear about them, I can't address it from one side or the other. If they can go through their supervisor, or if that doesn't work, they can go through their union if they feel that they've been harassed or anything like that. So I really do need to know about these incidents, please. Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is organizational meeting. Before addressing items 9A and B, I'd like to welcome the staff to this continuing administration. Furthermore, I note that we still have Mr. Alex Brown as town manager, James Marshall as assistant town manager, Ann Mackey as the town clerk, and Robert Scavron as town attorney. And I want to express appreciation to all of them for the outstanding job that they not only do, but personally for all the help that they give me. And I want to thank you all very much. Item 9A is the election of Mayor Pro Tem. Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate this. I want to make a nomination, if you don't mind. The person I want to nominate is going to be Councilor Vedderston. And I'm going to nominate because she has really been updated with everybody on the city thing, going to Washington DC. Here in the town council, she crosses her i's and t's and her p's and her m's. I feel very comfortable with her doing this. So I would like to nominate Cynthia Vedderston as Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilor Vedderston, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
So are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Councilor Cynthia Vedderston, serving as the Mayor of Pro Tem for this coming year, please say aye.
Aye.
So elected.
Thank you, everyone.
Would you like to say a few words, Councilor Vedderston?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the council for their continued, the continued honor of serving as Mayor Pro Tem. And I could only do it because all of you are part and parcel of making sure that everything that we do is so wonderful and that we get everything done. So crossing i's and t's comes from having all of you and the mayor and, of course, all of our staffs, so thank you.
And I want to say I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem And I want to say I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem and Councilor Edison for the way she helped me last year. There was a number of times when I couldn't go to certain functions, and she represented the town and did it very, very well. And I also want to thank the council for creating the environment that has made this job really satisfying for me. It's been a pleasure working with you all this past year, and I look forward to another pleasurable year. Thank you again. The next item, 9B, is the appointment of councilors to committee and board positions. Since each of you have the list of boards and commissions in your pocket, I would like to keep the appointments the same. And I have spoken to all the councilors, and all the councilors felt like they would like to serve on the same board or committee they served on in the past year. Councilor Conno, the Cemetery Board; Councilor Ray, Dispatch, Southwest Solid Waste and Parks and Recreation; Councilor Ammon Smith, Library Board and Area Transportation Authority; Councilor Edison, Museum and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments; Mayor Leidner, Dispatch Board, Southwest Solid Waste, Grand County Water Commission, and Ex officio Main Street Board. Do I hear any objections to these appointments?
I do have a correction.
Would you please point it out?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to correct, on the list of boards and commissions, it states under the chief elected officials, I'm sorry, under the Southwest Area Works Force Development Board, that David Gershson is a member of the board representing employer connection. Mr. Gershson has now lived in Silver City for, I can't even remember how many years, so I don't think he participates on that board anymore. So we should just maybe delete that from, you know, the schedule information.
That's on this list, Anne, the one that you gave me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So all of the ones I just read are so apparent. Do I hear a motion, Councilor Ray?
I call for a short break.
Okay, we have a motion for a short break. Do I have a second for that?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order, please. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. The first item, 11A, is the approval/disapproval of Ordinance Number 1256 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 40, Solid Waste, Article 1 in general, Section 40-2 and Article 3, Collection and Disposal of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Councilor Edison, I think you have this.
Thank you, Mayor. So this ordinance that is being presented for final vote today is really providing for the town's authority to provide the service of recycling in addition to its refuse collection. And it's really just inserting man recycling in different places, so, and the collection of any fees if they are so associated, but they're not really associated with recycling. Don't know, before I make another comment, if Mr. Brown would like to expand upon the reason why we need to do this.
For the enforcement and of the recycling program, also to change the structure for how we adopt the rates on an annual basis, just like water sewer and wastewater, that's in there. I think the only thing that I didn't have in the NOI Appendix A last time was an additional rate for customers who do not have actual garbage collection. That is in there now. But other than that, the rate structure in Appendix A that you see is actually what is in effect now, there's no change, except for that bottom part where we add the 65-gallon recycling and the 300-gallon tub recycling.
So I have a question to clarify that. So if someone does not have a utility account or water sewer with, or trash pickup with the town, they can call the town and get this?
Only in city limits.
Only in city limits. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, so if they're within city limits and on a private well, for instance?
Yes, we have multiple different types of accounts. We have accounts where people just have water.
Right.
We have some where they just have sewer because they have a private well.
Right.
But all of those because they're, and if they are in city limits, they can qualify through the garbage collection. And, well, they have to have garbage collection because even if they're taking their trash to the landfill, the town still pays for it out there, so they still need, we still will require that they have the garbage for the landfill. But there are, for instance, the reason for that additional recycling one was because, for instance, there's a couple strip malls where one business pays all at the water sewer and wastewater, and they have a, and they pay for a garbage collection from the big container. Well, there might be one business that has a lot of boxes that wants to recycle so they can get recycling as a standalone by themselves.
Okay, because I did get a question regarding that, because one of the businesses I frequent, they have a lot, they're the only one on the whole, in that whole sort of mini mall that does recycling. And so they want to make sure, and I said, well, you could contact, contact you.
Yeah, that's why we set that up, is because we didn't have that before, but we can do it now.
So do they need to go to, you know, the, right there on the bottom floor, the utility department?
Yeah, the utility building.
Billing, and then request that, and request the?
The container.
The container, okay. But thank you for doing that, because that's important for those folks. So I would also just want to mention real briefly that by now, everyone should have their new recycling bins. If, you know, if they did not receive one, and they already have trash pick up, they have utility count with the town, please, or you want an additional recycling bin, please call the Public Works Department, and I did not write down the phone number.
(388) 4640.
(388) 4640. And they will deliver one to you because they delivered one to me on Monday. Yeah, everyone got one but me. So that was interesting. It was kind of fun.
You know, what happened, I guess the Southwest Solid Waste Authority recycling people, they went out with our staff, and they tried to do it by memory because we couldn't keep up with the actual garbage collection to do on garbage day so we could see if they were doing it.
Okay.
So recycling had to try to do it by memory. And so I saw there's a lot of houses in my neighborhood that recycle, and there's a few that don't, but everybody got a recycling container because they knew so many people do. And then I saw in a few neighborhoods this week, today and yesterday, where they had the blue containers out. So hopefully, they'll realize they can call Public Works and get them.
So don't use your blue containers. Call for a recycling bin, that's a closed one, that will be automatically picked up and dumped, rather than?
And the only problem we've been having other than that is that we've got too many drivers for recycling.
Okay.
So they're learning the routes, and so they're taking longer. For instance, like my recycling usually is picked up, or my garbage is collected, picked up at around noon almost all the time. And my recycling, the first week, it was already 5:30, and they still hadn't shown up. Well, this week, they showed up at 4:30, so they're getting better.
They're getting better, they're getting more familiar.
They're learning.
Well, I, it was, I had recycling out, and everybody was getting their bins, and I just figured, because I was leaving that day, that there'd be a bin, and I came home from DC and went, oh, I don't have a bin. But I did put my recycling out, so, but they were very good, I'm going to tell you very quick and very prompt. I called them late in the day when I realized I didn't have one, and they promptly provided it on Monday morning. So if you, if you did not receive one and you're still using the old style, 26-gallon, I believe they are, is that what they are?
Twenty-seven gallons.
Twenty-seven gallon blue bags, please get the new automated ones. They're really nice, and they have all the information on them that you could possibly need about what to put in them and what not to put in them, so.
And I did talk to Solid Waste Authority, and they actually told me that they started receiving more recycling in the last two weeks.
Really?
Yeah.
I like that.
Because they got the bigger containers.
We like that. That's good, that's why we're doing this, so, that's wonderful. Well, Mr. Mayor, with that, I move to approve Resolution Number 2017 dash, I'm sorry, wrong one. Gosh, it's like a pattern today. Okay, I move to approve of Ordinance Number 1256 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 40, Solid Waste, Article 1 in general, Section 40-2 and Article 3, Collection and Disposal of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll figure.
Councilor Ray? Any discussion, well, first of all, I got that out of order. Anybody have any questions about an ordinance? Is there any discussion now?
I do. I got a question from Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, on this recycle bin, what is going to cost the public?
It's part of the current rate structure of the trash, trash.
Okay.
It's, we pay right now, we pay Southwest Solid Waste Authority $186,000 a year to collect our recycling. Most, almost all of that is going away, and we're using that money to pay this debt service for the next item on the agenda. So we're not going to have to raise rates to pay for the debt service on this.
Any other discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? Roll call, please, Anne.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The last item under unfinished business, 11B, is the approval/disapproval of Ordinance Number 1257 and Ordinance Authorizing Issuance of the Town's State Shared Gross Receipts Tax Revenue Bonds in the Amount of $450,000 to Finance Improvements to the Joint Utility System. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, I'll, um, this debt is for the utility infrastructure that is going to be, have to be installed when the DOT upgrades Highway 15. And when the DOT upgrades their facilities, they require that we pay to upgrade ours so we don't have to tear the road up. So we're going to borrow the money to do those utility repairs, and with that, Chris Sophia, go ahead.
Thank you.
This is Chris Muirhead, I'm sorry.
That's right. Chris Muirhead with the model firm, serves as bond counsel of the town over the years with Alex and all of you. Thank you, DeCine. Let me just run through this, it's very similar to what you've seen before, there isn't anything unique about it in terms of the bond ordinance itself. One thing to point out, and just for Anne's comfort, the 450, actually the final amount is 485. If you look in there, it approves 485, and then it breaks down into three annual payments on page seven of 160, 160, 165, all at 2.4%. From a public notice standpoint, we are comfortable giving a bond opinion if the publicized amount, which we published at 450, is within 10% of what ultimately happens. So if you were to take 450 or 45,000 on top of the 450, you'd still be above the 485 that we're at. So it is fine for our perspective to be able to say that it's properly noticed and approved. The ordinance is, we just hit, is that all three maturities are 2.4%. It is a pledge of the state shared gross receipts tax, which is consistent with three other debt obligations that the town has outstanding, the 2011 bonds, 2012 bonds, and 2014 bonds. This is a very short maturity, three years, will be paid off, can be paid off as early in full as in 2018, June 1st. So it is a, not what you would normally see in terms of long-term debt, but it's meant to address exactly the issue that Alex raised. The lender is Capital One Public Funding. Mark Valenzuela is in the audience with us, he's with George K. Baum, as you're all familiar with, he's a financial advisor. He sought bids from various banks in terms of, for various clients, and this was the best offer, and again, it's very good. It's, again, a direct placement, so you don't have disclosure, you're not publicly marketing it, and it's a flat rate of 2.4% over the three years. In approving the ordinance tonight, you would approve a bond purchase agreement, a very short, three-page document, that is the agreement between Capital One and the town between now and the time of closing, which would be April 25th. Happy to answer any questions. There's nothing in this ordinance that's inconsistent with what you have in your outstanding, other gross receipts tax debt, which is important. You don't want one lender to have a head, you know, a foot up on the other lenders in the chain. So this is all consistent, I recommend approval if that's the wish of the council, I'm comfortable that it's accurate.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ammon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one. I'll practice my oratorical skills. I move to approve Ordinance Number 1257, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2017, in an aggregate principal amount of $485,000. For the purpose, two, one, finance acquisition and construction of certain capital improvements to the town's joint utility system for the benefit of the town and its residents, and two, pay costs of issuance of the Series 2017 bonds, providing that the Series 2017 bonds will be payable and collectible from and secured by a pledge of the gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to Section 7-1-6-4, NMSA 1978. As amended, plan the state shared gross receipts tax, providing for the disposition of the receipts derived from said tax proceeds, prescribing other details concerning the bonds and tax proceeds, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and the form, terms, conditions, and manner of execution of the bonds, ratifying all actions previously taken in connection therewith, and repealing ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you. We have a motion, as read, is there a second? Councilor Conno?
I'll second that motion as stated, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? We have a motion as read, and a second, a roll call, please, Anne.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is new business. Item 12A under new business is the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2017-11, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and for municipal purpose in the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Again, I want to apologize for the mix-up in not including all the information on the, on the last, last time we tried this. Basically, what we're doing is we're decreasing, we're increasing transfers out from the water sewer fund by $183,612, and increasing the transfers in to water sewer fund by $183,612, and increasing the transfers in to the debt service funds for the same amount. And the reason being is that we're gonna pay off a loan that we had with the Department of Transportation for the water line under the bridge. We were gonna, originally gonna pay it over, pay it off over three years. We have the funds available, so I decided to pay it all off since we're gonna have to borrow this other money for the additional water lines on our Highway 15. So with that, I guess the easiest way to see it is if you look at the summary pages, the two summary pages in the back. If you look at debt service, currently the debt service transfers in, debt service other transfers in is $45,561. That is going up to $229,173 on the next page. And if you go back, transfers out from the water sewer fund is $674,100, and that will be going up to $857,712. I think what's important is you see, if you'll see that the reserve in the water sewer fund after that still is $213,000. We're not even required to keep a reserve in the enterprise funds, but I keep, I like to keep reserves in those enterprise funds because of all the utilities and upgrades and all those different kinds of things that can happen at any time of the year. And sometimes if we need a piece of equipment, for instance, we already bought a backhoe that wasn't originally budgeted of $90,000, and we're doing that because our revenues are actually coming in better than originally projected. And so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Mr. Brown, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2017-11, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2016, through July 30, June 30, 2017, and for the municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
Councilor Madison, thank you. Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any questions or comments from the audience? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the new business 12B is the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Tour of the Heela Beer Garden on Saturday, April 22, 2017, from noon to 8:00 p.m. at 820 North Village Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Tour of the Heela Incorporated. Liquor license holder information, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, License Number 67085, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, License Number 63013, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. I believe Mr. Jack Brennan will present this request.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors, I'm Jack Brennan, Tour of the Heela Race Director. And yes, we're doing another Tour of the Heela, we're doing a beer garden for the downtown Saturday Criterion. We did move the location from last year to our new location. Last year, we were at the old Western Stationery's parking lot, and from input from Teresa from Little Toad, we decided to try and move it down to where Bike Works is now located. And the main reason for doing that is Teresa had a lot of comments last year that folks inside the beer garden were really unable to see the race. There's a number of trees between the parking lot at Western Stationery's and the courses, and the race course itself. And by moving it down to where Bike Works is now located, there's a great view looking down to the start-finish line, they can see him going through that first turn and actually go up College Street, so it's a much better location for us. So, but we have two corrections we want to inform you, you people about. On this application, we, as far as where it says time alcohol served begins and where it ends, beginning is correct at noon, this is about halfway down on the application, but we need to amend it to where it says 8:00 p.m., not 11:00 p.m. This is on the application itself, and it's about a third of the way down on the sheet of paper where it says the time event begins at noon, and then it says event ends at 8:00 p.m.
Oh, I see.
Then below that, we say alcohol ends at 11:00 p.m.
Right.
That should be changed to 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
And we had some issues about the map that we produced for both of those licenses. So if I can talk more about that, if you want me to go into that area?
Yes.
Okay. So when we initially talked about moving the beer garden down to Bike Works, my first objective was to get with the chief, chief of police. And the chief and I met down at Bike Works, and we showed the chief what our intentions would be as far as the beer garden. And we never had any intentions of being on the sidewalk or right up to Bullard Street. Unfortunately, the map kind of shows Bullard Street itself, and that's not the case. We'll be on the property that Bike Works has, you know, that they rent from Carol Thompson. And then it does show us going into College Street. And what we did for that, in our application to the town of Silver City, under application for permit for privileged use of town right-of-way, I included that as far, as part of that permit where I described using the streets of College, or I'm sorry, Bullard College, Cooper, and Broadway for the course itself, then I went into describing part of College Street by Bike Works, kind of right between Bike Works and where the Kumquat used to be, where we'll have a bicycle rodeo that morning from 10 till noon. We hope to put an inflatable up there on the street and also have a little part of that area, a part of the beer garden. And that area includes, when you come off a Bike Works property, there's that turning lane, and we would like to put a little bleacher right there so people can sit there inside the beer garden and watch him make the turn and go up College Street. So it's really, the fencing would be out, not blocking pedestrian right-of-way and going, you know, between the beer garden and the fencing, but kind of back, so we have the beer garden and it would kind of go out to where the turning lane ends, and then go east on College Street, and then come back right to the property, and go up to where the food truck is now, that's where the fencing would end.
You just didn't know if you have spoken with Mr. Coiller, who owns the food truck, just because this is his first?
Yes.
First one, and also, I mean, your entrance and security is like directly in front of the food truck, so is he gonna be able to?
He's excited, no, he was the first person we talked to, yes, he was very excited about getting a part of it.
Thanks.
Councilor Madison?
Okay, so you did get Mr. Brown to sign because that is public right-of-way.
Correct.
And so I appreciate the fact that his signature was added to both of the permits. So the question, just so that I understand, so there is that right-hand turning lane, but you're not going to compromise the sidewalk?
Correct.
That runs in front, so it's really not gonna extend it to the right-hand turning lane, it's gonna be back from it?
It's gonna be back, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood what you were talking about.
Yes, we're not gonna keep pedestrians from moving, basically from Bike Works along the sidewalk over to the sidewalk by Hiken Bike and Little Toad, or I'm sorry, the Ilkumquat Building. It'll be open access, the same width as a sidewalk.
Okay, and it'll be handicapped accessible?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Councilor Amy Smith? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
I move to approve of two public celebration permits application for the Tour of the Heela Beer Garden on Saturday, April 22, 2017, from noon to 8:00 p.m. at 820 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Tour of the Heela, Inc. Liquor license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, License Number 67085, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, License Number 63013, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second, that motion is stated.
Councilor Connaught, thank you. Is there any, are there any questions? Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the new business is 12C, approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications and a waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church or school for the Virus Theater Spring Bliss Ball on Saturday, April 15, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 315 North Texas, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Virus Theater. Liquid license, liquor license holder information, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, License Number 67085, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, License Number 63013, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. Ms. Dowd Burden, you will present this?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm here representing Virus Theater tonight. As you know, we've been raising money for El Sol Theater to create a performing arts center in that space for the last year and a half, and we've been met with overwhelming support from the community. And we wanted to thank the community by offering not a fundraiser but a celebration. So this ball is free and open to the public, it's an opportunity to dress up, get out, see people, we hope to get a lot of different people from different parts of the community there, so that we can, we can share, celebrate, and let them know where we are with our plans on the theater. So this will be a great event for Virus Theater, and we did get a waiver from the church, from St. Vincent's Church, and have everything lined up. Let me know if you have any questions.
Councilor Madison?
I do have one question. I'm not sure if you meant to check the box for cultural slash artistic performance rather than state fair? Both of them have state fair checked.
Uh-oh. Yeah, definitely, it's not the state fair.
So I think you might want to correct that on the application.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it's just above it, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications and a waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol sales near a church or school for the Virus Theater Spring Bliss Ball on Saturday, April 15, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 315 North Texas, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Virus Theater. Liquor license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, License Number 67085, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And number two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, License Number 63013, HC68 Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you, Councilor Ray, is there a second?
We have. The motion is stated.
Councilor Connaught? Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Next, under new business is 12D, the approval slash disapproval of request for quote number 16-7-1, scrap metal. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, council, we have two scrap metal piles, one at the water shop and one at the wastewater treatment plant. Basically, they're old parts, like old water pipe, metal water pipe, there's railings, different things like that. We received two bids on it, and one from DNI Metals of Silver City, and the second from Patrick Peralta, 3,600 Broken Arrow Drive here in Silver City. Staff's recommendation to award the bid to Mr. Peralta for six cents per pound for both piles.
Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
I move to approve a request for quote number 16-17-1, scrap metal, to Patrick Peralta, six cents a pound for water shop and six cents a pound for water waste plant.
Is there a second? Councilor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is stated.
Okay. Any questions, any discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next, under new business is 12D, discussion involved on whether to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for March 28, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. As of March 26, there was no business to conduct at the regular council meeting scheduled for that date. Our department heads have no agenda requests, and Mr. Brown is okay with canceling the meeting. Therefore, I'm recommending that the meeting be canceled. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll appreciate if you cancel, because if not, I'll have to call in. Mr. Mayor, a move to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for March 28, 2017, at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is stated.
Councilor Amy Smith, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor- Councilor Ray? Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are still adjourned.